All right. Good afternoon. The time is now 2:03 PM. I am Mike Kelly, Chairman of the Johnson County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to welcome you all to this committee, the whole conversation. It is January 12th, 2023. Today, we are here to discuss the rules of order for the Board of County Commissioners. This committee, the whole, is an opportunity for us to educate or re-educate ourselves, or also to refresh our understanding of these rules to make sure that we honor our responsibilities and duties to the public in how we conduct our meetings, all of this in hope that we can achieve consistency, accountability, and accuracy in our meetings. There has been a committee that has gone through and spent a significant amount of time studying these rules of order, and I appreciate their efforts in doing so. You'll see for our consideration is the rules with several red lines for discussion. We're going to have legal counsel walk us through these rules numerically. We'll pause for comment and discussion at various changes or occasionally when circumstances allow, and I look forward to facilitating a discussion in my role as Chair. I will make one request. As I know some folks want to talk about various rules, and they come up in different places and sometimes refer back to other places within the rules. I'd ask that we hold our comments and discussion on rules until they come up in the numerical order, just so we can go through this process as substantively, substantively, effectively, and as efficiently as possible.
Chair, could I officially take your role, please?
I would love for you, after that introduction, to now please take the role.
Thank you. Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allenbran.
Allenbran, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
I'm here. Thank you very much. So now with that, I am going to ask that our legal counsel, Peg Trent, walk us through these rules.
I don't think it's following. There you go.
That was just Michael's.
Sorry, Mike.
Hello?
Okay, there you go. Peg Trent, Chief Counsel. As the Chair has indicated, I want to take a moment, kind of, report out about the subcommittee that met and was formed back in June of 2022. I think they first met in July of 2022. That consisted of Commissioner Hanslick, Commissioner Myers, and Commissioner Faust. Also, Linda Sater, our clerk, was also present during most of those discussions. So, all of you probably have received this little book, which is the Rules of Order, and within this, this edition that you have was adopted in 2009. It was originally brought forward for rules of conduct in '07 and then revised in '09. As you walk through these rules, and I want to start at the beginning, as Chair Kelly has directed, you hit the first section of the rules. It gives you the purpose of these rules, and that's really important, that we understand what the basis of this document and what it's doing. And I'm not going to read to you all of these rules, but at certain juncture, I think it's important to kind of walk through. You will also know in the rules in 2009, we have many cross-references throughout these rules. So if you look at rules as it talks the purpose, it gives you to state statute, and it gives you books that are no longer published or hard to locate on parliamentary procedure. So it's referring outside of Roberts' Rules but to Mason and Sturgis, DeMeter, all these others that no longer in case law that you can even locate or have access to. But the purpose of the rules were to, basically, for the Board of County Commissioners and how they were going to operate and govern their proceedings and transaction of business. And they were to be adopted by the Board and as a guide, basically, in conducting the business. And that doesn't just mean meetings, but you as a whole, how you're operating and what you're doing as an entity. These rules also involve your interactions with public, your interactions among yourselves, and your interactions with staff, and how that operates. So as part of the review, and I'm not sure why this went down, as part of the review, the subcommittee, the first action, if you will, is they wanted to know, what are all these outside documents that were provided within the rules of order, and how do I get access to it? Because some of them, we couldn't even locate where it came from. So, the committee then, after obtaining all of that, started walking through these section by section. And as you get to the first section, where we talk by purpose, in reviewing that sentence, it was important to know that it's the business and conduct, because if you looked at the rules, we weren't only just looking at the rules, at the transaction of your meetings and operation, but how you conduct yourself. So that's why the word "conduct" was added into these rules, to make sure that it reflects what the purpose is and what this is regulating. It was also discussed that you did need to give some sites to state statute, because it really helps as if there is a change in law or something that happens that we can refer back to and where that came from, and the Roberts' Rules. In all candor, it's not necessary, but, you know, at this point, it was decided by the committee a recommendation, and I use that loosely, it was just discussion of removing those cross-references, but a decision was discussed possibly just including the statute and the Roberts' Rules of Order. Quickly, what was noted, too, is the Roberts' Rules of Order within these rules, that if it wasn't discussed in these rules here you've adopted, it referred over to the Roberts' Rules of Order, but it said it had to be the 10th edition. And this is the 10th edition. However, we're on the 12th edition now, and it didn't, and Roberts' Rules of Order do revise, and they do change, and they address many new things, such as automation, how we, you know, the public, you know, and how that is automated for you to appear, like in COVID times. These rules changed with that respect, so that there was an understanding how, you know, business meetings would be operated in this situation. So as you move through the rules, there were certain guidelines that were put into place from the previous Board that adopted this in '09, to go through and basically determine what are your rights as members of this Board. And one of those was that these rules were intended to facilitate, not obstruct, the conduct of business by providing an orderly and consistent framework. And that goes back to the basis of why you're here. One of the reasons you're here, as a member of the Board of County Commission, is the business of the county, to be making sure that meetings are occurring for an operation. Next that goes into, and I want to go through a little bit before entertaining questions, I'll stop and then let, you know, have the Chair facilitate just dialogue, but I want to go a little bit further into this and then pause. But basically, which is very clear you wanted to make, is that it's known that you each have equal rights and responsibilities in voting. I know that in some communities, they think the mayor or the Chair doesn't vote, or they're the last to vote, or their vote doesn't count. In your situation, everybody's vote counts, and that comes the genesis from the Charter, that you each have that right. However, the Charter does provide you guidance that the key responsibility, and I'm going to pull this up so you can see, the Charter actually is the document that provides, can you see the screen? Yeah. Which provides that the Chair is to be the actual person who is to keep the meetings and to make those determination, sorry, I was looking at this, I apologize, I may show you the section in the Charter, that actually goes into the duties of the Chair. And that's really important to know, the duties of the Chair, because that's carried over in the organization and operation of the rules. And that, again, in the Charter, be considered a member of the Commission and vote as provided law. So we do, the Charter does provide that the Chair does vote. It says that they're to have the same rights and privileges as any Commissioner member, because in some, they do not. And the Chair is to provide the leadership in the communication and interpretation of policy. That's very critical as you look through these rules of order. Who is the point person to be making decisions that are occurring about operationally and the conduct of business of the county, as it relates to the Board of County Commissioners? They're to lead the Commission in the developing of long-range plans and policies, establishing annual priorities and planning for the economic growth and stability of Johnson County. Again, taking that forward role in leading you and your discussions, facilitating those roles. Number five is to officiate and preside at all meetings and events. So the Chair is to be the point person as to how these meetings are to be run and when the Chair makes a decision. And as we get through these rules, you're going to see, the rules have empowered, as a result of the Charter, what you're seeing as to why the authority was given to the Chair. And this was back in '07, when it was originated, and '09, from the Charter, that's what the Board had determined. In addition, and I'm walking you through, the Chair has the ability to call special meetings of the Commission as deemed necessary and as required by law, attend and designate. So then, you know how we get into those liaison positions, and how you're working on boards and committees and so forth? This is to attend or designate a representative of the Commission to attend all meetings, conferences, negotiations relating to policy matters involving units of government and legislative bodies. Again, that is the authority vested in the Chair to make those decisions, who is going to what on behalf of the county to represent the county's business. In addition, it is in these reports that we see from the manager, these are to receive reports from the county manager, which is part of your agenda that you're seeing, so that the Chair is making sure you're getting updates on certain information in your meeting. Also, to prepare at least annually, a written message to the Commission and to the citizens dealing with the economic, physical, and social conditions and needs of Johnson County Government. And lastly, to sign, if authorized by the Commission, all contracts and other documents. And so the Chair shall have all other powers that are also, that we see within the state law. And before I leave this Charter, I want to also highlight, right after the Chair, it talks about prohibitions. And the Charter, again, this is going to be carried out as we go through these rules of order. No Commission member shall directly interfere with any conduct of any agency or any department of this county, including the appointment or removal of employees, except at the express direction of the Commission or as otherwise provided in the Charter. And no former Commissioner may hold or any compensated point of office or county employment until one year after leaving office. So, I know that I said I wouldn't read to you, but I think it's really important, as we move forward, you're going to see how that's carried over into this document. And I'm going to stop when I get right at the end of Section 2, for the Chair to facilitate dialogue at this point. So when you go back over then to Section 1 of these rules, it says, we've already talked about what it is, the purpose of these rules, and then it carries over that all members shall have those equal rights, the genesis coming from the Charter, and that all members present and participating in meetings have the right to make and second and amend motions. So essentially, it was determined, you can make a motion and second, but the Chair, as you'll get later on, gets to determine when that's brought in and when can you bring forward the motion, and the rules do get into that. So also, it indicates that all members must present and participating in meetings have the right to participate in debate, in which discussion is permitted, and that they shall speak for intervals not exceeding five minutes. So there's a time limit, just like we put a limit on the public in speaking, there's a time limit on Commissioners, so that you're going back to the main purpose of these rules, to keep the business moving and what you're doing. Not trying to hinder debate, but trying to make sure that you're concise, like we ask of the citizens, to be on point in what you're doing and not being repetitive and moving forward, that we're really making an item and getting to the issues. And there is the key, after being recognized by the Chair. So the Chair is the person that has to recognize the Board member. If you're not recognized, then you can't say, "Chair, Chair." The Chair has to recognize you and be in the proper purpose, just like we would in Roberts' Rules of Order, there is a process. The reason that that occurs, as you can imagine, and the subcommittee had many discussions on this, is that you want to make sure orderly, we're efficient, we're getting the business. When we're so busy going off on tangents and not on the agenda, then the public perceives you're not focused on the business of the county. So all members shall have an equal opportunity to speak, that's why the Chair will look to each side of the dais to call on anyone, and as a courtesy, the Chair may signal the Commissioner, and it's not being rude to wrap up their comments, because they need to move on, to give other opportunity to the other members of the Commission to address. Sometimes if a Commissioner is speaking for longer than five, the subcommittee noticed it hinders other Commissioners to speak and to add in that dialogue, and you're trying to get the debate, as you are elected, from the various districts to have an opinion if they desire or to add or contribute, so it hinders that ability. Also, within this section, it says that you do have a right, as a Board member, to make inquiries and seek clarification or further information on pending matters. That comes in the form of your questions. So it is appropriate for Board members to ask questions in order to know the information. Now, what it doesn't say here is, where do you ask those questions? Does it occur in a public meeting or outside of a public meeting? And the subcommittee also had dialogue around that, because right now, it's just broad, you have a right to inquire. Now, later on in the rules, we get into interaction of the Board members with staff. That may be another option, you know, that the subcommittee discussed, but this is a broad thing that you have a right. And then additionally in that section, it talks about, all members present for meetings have a right to vote on matters unless they have a conflict of interest, which we're going to get into, in which case a member should abstain from participating in those proceedings. We'll get to that, but I just want you to know, that would be the only time you would not vote, or if you were absent. The Board is a single continuing governing body, and the will of the majority shall be the decision of the Board and shall be binding upon it. This is where I have said in trainings to Boards, such as the Planning Commission, you speak as one, you're a Board of one, that is your role and fiduciary duty, that when you vote on a matter and the Board has made a decision, that is the Board's decision. It does not mean you don't have a personal opinion, you all were elected for your personal opinions, but what happens is you have to be cautious, that is, you as a County Commissioner, your voice, they know you as a County Commissioner, is it you as a County Commissioner? Are you speaking on behalf of the Board? And that is really critical, because in the Charter, it puts that in the Chair to determine who speaks for the Board as one. And we'll get further into the speaking for itself, but these were comments from the subcommittee, you know, of what the review. And then, in addition, was compatibility, so I was going to stop at C. So we'll just stop right there to kind of take a breath and share, if you would like to facilitate then.
Sure. Thank you very much, Peg. I appreciate you getting into the introduction, and obviously, a lot of the themes that we're going to address arise within that first section regarding the purpose and the principles and the authority from these rules that ultimately goes back to the Charter. That is the Home Rule Charter that governs at the end of the day. To the committee's red line points, I appreciate the recognition that conduct is also one to include there, because in these rules, we don't just talk about the proceedings of how we take a vote, but it's also how we conduct ourselves as Commissioners, and that reflects upon all of us, but also of the county, so I appreciate their addition to their...
I'm so sorry.
Hard to miss that one. Also, just a side note, that the phrase "Chairman" has been changed to "Chair," a more gender-neutral term. I fully expect that some point in the future, we will have a woman, another woman, serve as Chair, so I think that's a fine addition. So with that, does anybody else have any comments relating to this initial section of rules, purposes, and principles? I know Commissioner Ashcraft, you had said that you had a question you would like to raise.
I will defer my question.
Okay. Commissioner Allenbran.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize for having my loud noise. First of all, I want to thank the three Commissioners for all this work, because I know that it was a lot of time out of their schedule, and I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate you, Ms. Trent, bringing these to light, because I struggled being on different boards and being the Chairman of the Board, and everything seemed so different, so I never knew which way I was supposed to go. So my question is, am I assuming we do not have to look at Roberts' Rule of Order? This is all we need to, do we have to refer back to anything else, or is it all here?
Chair, if I may.
By all means.
Okay. So Commissioner Allenbran, what the committee, subcommittee discussed is, this was areas where, and this is from the previous Board, areas where they wanted to deviate, the county is deviating from the Roberts' Rules. So you still have the Roberts' Rules of Order on areas that are not covered in this document, but there, and there is some repetitiveness of cross-referencing to areas within Roberts' Rules, which is the same, and there are certain areas where they deviate. What we attempted to do, and what the previous writers have done in these rules, is in the notes section, it will tell you when it's deviated. We've put that incorporated to get rid of the note, so that you know when we're deviating from Roberts' Rules of Order. But it was determined by the subcommittee, and I guess I would defer to them, the members, but they, we felt that even though it was repetitive to the Roberts' Rules, certain things, people want a quick reference, and this gave a quick reference to be in. So to answer your question, because it's very, you still will need to look at the Roberts' Rules of Order. You would initially go to the rules, and if it's not in the rules, then you would go to the Roberts' Rules of Order. And they're moving it to the 12th edition, so as the edition changes, then you would go with what is the current rule, instead of just...
Will you provide that to us?
We will have to do that, because I don't believe anyone, does everyone have? I don't think this copy.
Mr. Chair, thank you for bringing this forward. I really do appreciate the clarification.
I'll move to Commissioner Faust and Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yeah, as someone who's been around for each of the Charter meetings, I've read through all the documents from all the past charters. The reason why the Mayor, I mean, the Chair is not a Mayor with a veto and is one of seven, it is very clear throughout the Charter, the Chair is first among equals. And so I just want to, you know, you're making the Chair very, like a Mayor, it is not. The Chair is, and that is very clear in every Charter discussion, and that's why they are one of seven votes, so I don't want to lose that.
But they're also, that's correct as to votes, if I may. However, it is in the Charter for Johnson County that the Chair is tasked with ruling and being the final on meetings.
But still, in other structural components, that was very clear through the charters, that it's not a mayor form of government.
Correct. I would agree.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Trent, just a few questions. When the, and maybe this is to the subcommittee as much as you, when there was discussion about Roberts' Rules of Order, was there any consideration? Because Roberts' Rules of Order also has another text called RRO for Small Boards and Committees, which instills the voluminous incidental motion and remotioning efforts, and for smaller groups, it's much more user-friendly and many would argue effective. Was that ever considered?
No, the subcommittee did not look at that. They looked at what was within the four corners of the current rules. My experience with boards of governmental entities was that of this nature was to use the Roberts' Rules of Order, and most boards and commissions use the Roberts' Rules of Order. It's trained in agriculture everywhere of parliamentary procedures, so that has not been, and I think, you know, the other members may comment, it was not considered nor discussed.
Okay. Follow-on, Mr. Chair, kind of an incidental question. On Section 206 of Section 5, the Chair officiates and presides over all meetings and events. Is there a definition of what events are or might be?
You're asking specifically about the Charter.
Yeah. Is that, is there a definition? Because I know that the Chair chairs the Audit Subcommittee, but we've had other working groups that the Chair has not participated in, and I'm just wondering, is there a definition or how are we defining that? I'm just asking for clarification.
I will make note of that, if that's something.
Operationally, I'm just wondering how we will be defining that.
We could clarify that. Within the rules, we talk about special events. I think if you go down, we called it, the Subcommittee discussed gatherings, which you're doing right now, and giving public notices, is that what you're referring to, those events? We do have that as discussed as a gathering of Commissioners, but it is not defined in the Charter. I'm, you know...
I was just wondering for subcommittees, if the Chair had to chair those or if there was some flexibility.
I think under subsection 7, he can designate, he or she can designate a representative to attend the meetings or conferences.
Yeah.
So, Commissioner Hanslick.
Yes, just in response to Commissioner Ashcraft, I think one of the things we talked about was, originally, part of why the Home Rule Charter came to be was because prior to that, the Commissioners took turns being the Chair, and there was no consistency in who actually was representing the county, especially to other units of government, to metro area, those kinds of things, and that was part of why this Charter came to be. And my understanding in our discussions is, events are things where the county is represented at certain events. Thinking, like during COVID, when there would be press, metro-wide press conferences, the Chair represented the Board of County Commissioners. We didn't all go to do that. So that's how I was interpreting that. I don't know if people have other recollection of that, but...
That's just an inquiry. I don't know.
Yeah, the Chair is to be, unless the Chair designates somebody else, the Chair is to be the representative of the, and speak in those occasions for the Board.
Commissioner Hare, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Section 1A... Section 1A, these rules are intended to facilitate and not obstruct. So how do we differentiate between debate and obstruction?
Chair, so at this point, further in the rules, as we drill down and we go through it, I believe there's rules that were put in place to make for efficient and flow of meetings so to avoid obstruction. But if you'll look further on as we go through the discussion of rules, the key is to allow for debate, and that means to have your points made and to discuss items that are brought before. And if we have an individual or others who are, you know, trying to, I think the more is in the context obstruction to make sure you're flowing of the meeting and everyone's getting heard and making it efficient. It isn't that because your views are not my views that I'm obstructing. It's more that you have an ability to communicate and everybody has that opportunity.
I think a note needs to be made that a representative republic is not always neat, a neat package. I know when I served in the House of Representatives, sometimes we had all night meetings at the end of the session. That wasn't, I mean, it wasn't neat. It wasn't pretty, but that was the process. So I don't want to have rules that constrain the actual process of a representative republic. I don't want efficiency to outweigh representation.
And I think in the rules, the debate does allow for opportunity to, it's just within the framework. So if you're following the rules and the framework, in candor, you are addressing the issues and having that debate. And the messiness that you're referring to is foreign to me because this is about governance and how you govern. And the word messy, I don't understand because the Roberts Rules of Order is there to, it's the very name, order, so that we're operating within those perimeters.
One person's order might be another person's constraint of.
That's why the rules are here to help.
Okay.
So you're not constrained.
Okay. Very good.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ashcraft had a question, so we can come back, but I want to make sure that he got a chance to address his point.
Thank you. Ms. Trent, who is the timekeeper, the parliamentarian?
Timekeeper for, you mean the five minute?
Yes, ma'am.
It does not indicate who that would be.
By default.
I presumed it was the chair.
The chair. And just for clarification, was there any discussion about when the clerk, Clark, clerk, clock, excuse me, when the clock starts and restarts? Because if it is a conversation.
Right.
No one can speak for more than five minutes, but in a conversation, it could be longer than that.
As a matter of fact, further in the rules, it does discuss that about debate. And when you're debating an issue, you know, and that, and it is for the chair to determine in the sense, and I can go fast forward if you'd like to debate, just to show you, but debate talks about that five minute and how, you know, you can't just say, let's say I made a point five minutes, we're in, we're having that discussion. The chair, you know, you can go on to another matter. It's not to interfere with your debate, but to keep the movement, that you're not repeating the item. But it talks about it later in the document, but it can be separate items.
Page 14. To that point, and I think we all have general topics that we do want to discuss, and the first section is relatively thematic when we talk about things that are going to come up. And to Commissioner O'Hara's point, I understand that we want robust debate on substantive matters. I think that's appropriate. And that does, that the order and consistency of the framework that's discussed within these rules is not intended to limit that debate, but instead to organize that debate. Doesn't say that the debate is going to be quick. It doesn't say that the debate is going to necessarily come to a perfect consensus on every topic, but it provides us an agreement amongst each other so not only that we can hold ourselves to the standard, but that others can hold us to the standard of how our debate and our meetings are going to be conducted so that there can be some consistency and accountability moving forward. And at least that would be my hope for these rules and for all of our interactions as a commission. Did you have another question?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Under Section 206, provide leadership in the communication and interpretation of policy to the public. Interpretation of policy is not making policy, and I think that that needs to have clarification. And when we get to.
So point of order, you are reading from the charter, and we have no authority as the county commission to change the charter.
Well, I'm not saying that, but this was brought up. The chief legal counsel read these points that under 2.06, the duties of the chair, to provide leadership in the communication and interpretation of policy to the public. And I'm just stating that that is an interpretation of policy and not making a policy.
Chair, if I could, the, how meetings are operated is different. This is about internal, but this document, we're going to have an opportunity to discuss that later on. Right now, this is the section.
Correct, but you brought this, you brought this up and you read it.
Yeah, because you needed to know what the charter says.
I have a couple of other questions. That was my statement. And then you lead the commission in developing its long range plans and policies, establishing annual priorities and planning for economic growth and stability of Johnson County government. You left off government. You said Johnson County.
I just was, I'm sorry.
Correct, right.
You are correct.
But this is government, not, not the, not the economy of the county. It says the government. And then one, the last one, the, I think that as we go forward, officiate needs to be defined. Officiate does not mean, again, changing policies unilaterally. And I think that's it up to this point.
All right. And I think we can all agree that the Home Rule Charter says what it says. But Commissioner Hanslick, I'm going to invite you to make a comment, but then I'm going to ask us that we move along into the more substantive parts of the rules.
I actually forget what I was going to say.
All right.
Say, oh, I know what it was. I know what it was now. Just real quick comment in regard to the five minute. The discussion I believe we had was more about, you can't come and filibuster, basically. I couldn't come and just start talking and say, sorry, Mr. Chair, I have the floor. I can talk for three hours if I want to. That was part of that, that five minute rule, and I don't think any of us thought of it as being a time to really, down to the second kind of a rule, but just saying, you, be mindful that you don't, you don't have the floor for unlimited lengths of time.
And I think even that section B2 says that as a courtesy, the chair can signal that the commissioners exceeded the five minutes. And so the courtesy is a key word to me there, and I hope we'd all conduct ourselves accordingly, not to be arbitrary in the imposition, but instead to be courteous, but also recognize the impact of others on filibustering, as Commissioner Hanslick noted. So with that.
Page 2.
Let's keep going.
Proceeding. Okay, section two deals with compatibility, meaning we don't look at these rules just in a vacuum. We have to make sure they do not conflict with the Constitution, state of Kansas, and Home Rule Charter. The revisions in these rules have been reviewed by the legal department, various attorneys, so we're ensuring that these are in compliance and no conflict. As we move to section three, procedural authority, again, in line with the charter, in the absence of a rule or established practice herein, if it's not in the rule, the chair shall declare the proper procedure. If a point of order is raised and sustained, then the applicable procedure is set forth in the current Roberts Rules of Order. So.
Where are you?
I'm on page two of the document. I have it up on the screen.
You're on procedural authority?
Yes. Under procedural authority, section three.
Okay, I was going to section.
I'm sorry. Section three, procedural authority.
Thank you.
And so what we're having here is, I know today we had some discussion of point of order and how that was to be discussed, but the subcommittee in talking about this wanted to make sure that we had the current Roberts Rules of Order. I can tell you that section hasn't changed from the 10th to the 12th, but it is something you want to always make sure we're all working at the most current rulebook. Right now, you can go online for Roberts' Rules of Order, so I have both formats, whether it be the hard copy or the digital. I like the digital because you can search and find, but there's also, and I have a handout I can provide at some point, part of training on Roberts' Rules. It just gives a really nice, so that you know what's debatable, what's not debatable, and how you process through. So a point of order does not require a second, and a point of order then is basically an individual can raise a point of order. It is up, which we will get into later, on points of order, when we get into that section, it is up to the chair to make the decision, and we're using the Roberts Rules of Order, which you saw play out today. So that was kind of the process. Right now, when we were in the subcommittee, I don't believe the subcommittee had any concerns about how this practice was being conducted. Again, deferring to the charter, the chair making that decision made appropriate sense. If it does, we can't think of every scenario, especially when here in this county, we were faced with a pandemic. You have to have some flexibility. Things change. What happens so the chair can make those decisions if it's not in the rules of order? Okay. Next is applicability. These rules not only apply to your regular business meeting, but they apply to other items that you sit as the PBC, the Public Building Commission, you sit as the Fire District Two. These rules also apply to those entities when you are sitting in that role or in that seat, the Board of Health as well serves in that role. There is a section that talks about suspension of the rules, and a rule may be suspended by a majority vote, but such expense, suspension does not exceed that matter that you're doing it. So you want some flexibility that you want. I've had it, we're not as formal, but I've had where you had to ask permission, even what I'm doing right now, because we technically are in a meeting of a committee of the whole, to ask permission, to have the flexibility to have the floor, like I'm going back to have this more of a discussion. So you would ask that the rules be, you know, released a little to give flexibility to the speaker. And that can happen, but then there would need to be a vote of a majority to do that. Also, the chair has the ability in special situations, which we'll get to, to even do it in advance, to know that this is how we're going to do it. And a motion to suspend the rules must state the purpose of the suspension. It has to be specific. Again, the cross reference to the rules of order, this is in Roberts' Rules, so this is nothing different. The amendment of the rules, so when, at the end of the day, when we get through all of these rules and we bring it forward for a vote, it only takes a majority in a public meeting. There's no public hearing. It's just you because it's your rules of operation and what you want. The effect, these rules shall remain in effect upon adoption and otherwise amended or repealed. So these rules from 2009 have been in effect. Ideally, every time a new board is seated, we should be doing this to review if there's anything that's changed and making sure that, you know, maybe things have changed in what you would like to see. So I would pause at that point before I move on to the next section.
Compatibility, procedural authority.
Applicability.
Yep. Commissioner O'Hara.
Just a quick question. So this morning, if, if the motion to suspend the rules would have received a majority, then Commissioner Ashcraft's motion could have been voted on?
No, that was something, that's different. We're saying something that was specifically in the rule. I've not even, I'm trying to think of an opportunity that I've had it come up in my career.
So there's no.
Very rarely used.
So there is no override of the chair's decision?
Correct.
There is no override?
Well, you can appeal. I take it back. You could ask what Commissioner Ashcraft did. He asked for a vote, which they, was second on his decision, on the chair's decision, and you took a vote.
And if a majority had voted with.
Yes.
Then that would have been, that would have overridden the chair's.
His interpretation.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that you get the motion on the floor. You've still got to get the votes to have the motion.
Right.
To discuss it, but it would just for his interpretation, the chair's.
But that could have taken that vote to a discussion point, and a vote could have been taken.
Potentially. There's a lot of ifs in there.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, this is a little bit forward, but when we talk about messy, we talk about conduct, I just wish that we had enough respect for each other that we could get it on the agenda so we could have discussion. That's my frustration level is that, you know, we don't have the ability, if you don't go to the chairman and you don't, our chair, if you don't go to the chair and you don't ask to discuss it, that's frustrating. As other commissioners, I have to research things and I have to study it. So that is my only comment, so.
So we'll get to that later in the discussion about it, but thank you. I'll put a placeholder for that.
Sorry.
Okay. Circling back to just these topics on sections two through seven, Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes. Mr. Chair, I was going to mention, Ms. Trent, I think you alluded to it. It has been a practice here. The previous chair, I think, did relax the rule of order in order to allow a more fluid conversation at time to time between commissioners and staff. So you couldn't think of an example, but I think that the practice has recognized that, not an official recognition that we're suspending, but unofficially, that happened quite often. So I don't find that to be.
And the chair did that to relax, and that's within the authority. However, what happens is the business, which is your purpose under the charter and under here, is not getting done, and that's why the more orderly way is to have the process of how an agenda item comes on and how that would be operated.
Commissioner O'Hara, did you have a question on this section?
Just real quickly, I, I would like to understand what example the board has had that the business of the county has not gone forward.
It is, I don't even understand that question because you're, we're going to get through these dockets if it takes us till four and five at night or into the midnight, and I've been part of not here, where we've gone to one in the morning. But I think people get tired and hungry, and that interferes with your ability to give thoughtful discussion and process and making a person feel safe and heard at the dais. And so that's why you have the order to do it. So just saying, I'm just citing to the charter, which gives that, that concept and what the public voted on and wanting. So.
Thank you. All right. There's not other comments on this particular section. I'd like us to continue moving on. We'll go back to membership, starting with conduct.
Okay. And Chair, just for, so I know how much time, when is, when is our hour and a half up? I didn't.
We have 40 minutes remaining.
Forty minutes. Okay, thank you.
We can go to midnight.
Again, back to the order we are discussing. No, and if we don't get quite to 3:30 and we get a good stopping point, five minutes before, or if we are at 95 minutes, five minutes after, I'd ask for everybody's just leeway and a little bit of flexibility. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next section is where we're getting into you, you as the, you're referred to throughout the document as members, the Board of County Commissioner members. And so this section is regulating, if you will, your conduct. Remember, I said there are three areas within it. That's why we were changing this to conduct. The discussion was how you conduct yourself and how you operate as a member. We'll get into staff and public, but right now, how you on the dais. So one of the things is conduct. Again, this is how you're to act in a proper businesslike manner, show respect to each other, demonstrate courtesy, the key word courtesy, and respect of the board, for the public, for the staff, and to the members. And don't, you know, impute to another, either directly or indirectly, any form that is unbecoming of a member of the board. Again, the genesis of this, as you know, as I had showed earlier, is in our charter, the county's charter. Again, no commissioner shall interfere with the conduct. This is getting into how you interact and what you are doing. So we're trying to make sure that you're acting in a professional. Again, that's in the Roberts Rules of Order, too. This is all, you know, coming together. The Code of Ethics, which is another document that the subcommittee, if you recall, they The Code of Ethics, which is another document that the subcommittee, if you recall, they came, were assigned to just go through the rules of order in June, and then the committee, subcommittee quickly learned that we also needed to discuss the Code of Ethics, so the subcommittee was tasked with expansion to the Code of Ethics. There will be some recommendations coming forward on the Code of Ethics, which we'll get to, and I'm going to kind of cross over, because we're starting to get into a little bit of that as to conflicts of interest. But this will, I think we're slated for February 9th, County Manager, I believe, to talk about the Code of Ethics and those changes after we get through the rules of order. So, this document is going to cross-reference to the currently adopted code, so if we adopt this document, it will also. I also want to let you know, the rules of order apply to you as the board, not to boards and commissions, not to employees. Your Code of Ethics applies to everyone. The Code of Ethics that you currently have, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, it's from the 80s, never has been revised, applies to employees, boards and commissions, you as board members, as well as the elected officials of the sheriff and the DA. And it provides a process, I think there's, it's 11 pages, the first four deal mostly with employees, very unclear, and the rest deals with commission and board members. And so, the subcommittee quickly learned as you're going through this document, there's certain items in the conduct that carries over to your Code of Ethics. One of the items is going to be conflicts of interest, obviously that is in. And this is for a discussion right now, as we move forward with the Code of Ethics from the subcommittee, you know, what are the standards? Right now, we watched, I think, processes with boards, county boards, and I'll just be direct, planning commission, where we had a host of conflicts of interest, where we're fortunate, we even had a quorum, and there, you know, the statute requires 12 members, and we had almost six members, we almost did not have a quorum. And that was because of the standard is just not clear in your Code of Ethics. It is a struggle in interpreting it, it's very subjective, and you want something that is more measurable for you as board members who are elected, and our county board who are appointed. Employees may be a different category in what you would want, because you want that flexibility as a personnel matter, and those are handled separately, but it was quickly acknowledged by the board, subcommittee, that there, this may not be a good process, and we maybe needed to clear that up, so there was more certainty all around. These employee, if, if it moves in this direction, in what the subcommittee, and what I'm going to discuss with you through this document, what that may require then is the, when we get to the Code of Ethics and we separate, you know, how that applies to board, to you, and to boards and commissions and employees, that there would be revision to personnel policies, pardon me, procedures, I get this wrong, procedures of, that apply to employees, so that they'll be under an ethic if we do separate. So, I have been working with our HR department, my legal team, everybody, we're working together in the event, as we get through this document, that's the direction we're going. The conflict of interest, again, as I said, it was not, it's not very, oh, it went dark on me, there it is, is not, was not very clear. So, in your book, and I want to make sure, it said, "A real or potential conflict of interest shall be declared, and the members so declaring the conflict shall abstain from further participation in the matter. Members should remain mindful of provisions of the Code of Ethics, state conflict laws, but also aware that many other situations can present the appearance of actual conflict of interest, which is an appearance of impropriety. If there are concerns, call the chief counsel and determine whether a conflict exists." So, the problem that that presents is right now, the way you have your conflicts set up, you have three, you have two levels of conflicts. You have your state-local conflict, was where you declare your substantial interest statements, then you have the second level, which is the county Code of Ethics from the 80s, that gets into anything that gives an appearance of impropriety. Well, you were elected, and so were the boards of members appointed, because of your background and what you're doing, and Kansas State Legislature recognized there are certain perimeters in which you as an elected official should be able to do the transaction of the business or our boards without that interruption, as long as you do proper disclosure on your substantial interest statement, and there's other criteria, such as competitive bidding, things that are built in to protect you from that appearance that's built in of impropriety. It's looking at direct and indirect, it's also looking at your spouse, it's looking at your employer, it's looking, it takes into account from the local conflict. So, the discussion was of the subcommittee, why aren't we following that, which is clear to interpret, so that you have clear direction? So, what I'm submitting to you today is, from that dialogue, was that we follow more along the local conflict statute, and, and what comes with that. Now, when we get to the Code of Ethics, I'll drill down further into that, to go into the specifics of what that would mean, but I, you know, just so you know, the state statute that I'm referencing in this draft, there are several statutes, it goes up to 75 dash, what is it, 4306, which is the penalty, a misdemeanor crime, if you violate this. If there is a violation, technically, you know, it can go through, up to the commission, so the Kansas Ethical, it was a governmental commission on ethics, it would go to them for review, because it could be a possible misdemeanor, and when we get to the Code of Ethics, it could come through you, and what would be proposed as how we would do complaints for the public, so if public wanted a place where they can put complaints. Also, we talked about, there was some confusion in the subcommittee, because you have your ethics hotline, you have, but there's no real place to come in the front door to file a complaint, you know, they send them to legal, send them over to the county manager, they're coming in, and trying to get unity, that will come through a separate policy. But right now, to have that discussion, it would be more aligned with the ability that anybody who derives some direct or tangible personal or professional benefit from a particular resolution of a matter, or has a substantial interest, shall declare a conflict of interest and shall be disqualified from debating, and discussing and voting on the item, however, they can be present for the purposes of a quorum, so we can always have a quorum to move forward, that just shows that they abstain, and I think we've had that in the previous year where that was occurring on this board. And then, the chair shall declare abstention for that affected member for that item or agenda. And in case there is a complaint, let's say that someone didn't abstain, and there's a complaint, that would go through my office, so it would come through what we're going to be proposing in the Code of Ethics, it would come through the, which will have the ethic hotline, that will then be disseminated to my office, the legal department, to handle, and making that determination. If there's any questions in advance of a meeting of whether you have a conflict, you would consult with me, and I will put it in writing for you, that you know that I have reviewed it, so that if someone questions it, you were told by your counsel that this was permissible. You know, I've, you know, you still have the ability that you have to take ownership for your conflicts, but at the same time, I believe that's a role that we should be fulfilling for the boards and for you as the Board of County Commissioners. Right now, our board members are not filing substantial interest statements, we do not know what they have. Now, they've been very, let me put it aside, they've been very forthright, they come forward, tell people, you know, of the directors, but the key is, it should be coming through legal to make sure, legal in advance is kind of vetting those, to make sure that they're aware of when they can vote. So, I'm going to pause right there, because there's a lot here to unpack.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Yes, thank you. I was going to, going to ask Ms. Trent, maybe to, to speak a little bit further about our discussions in regard to trying to make it more, more clear what actually constitutes a conflict of interest, rather than just an appearance, because an appearance is very, very subjective. I mean, we've had people, public come here and say, "You have a conflict of interest because you gave $25 to some organization 50 years ago." What? That is not a conflict of interest. This, I think this definition that is in the rules now really focuses on financial gain, or some kind of professional gain, that, that, and takes out that part of an appearance. So, if you might.
Yeah, I think you described it, Chair, she described it just exactly what the subcommittee and everyone was discussing. It takes out that gas of appearance, and puts it more into these buckets, if you will, of interpretation, and the state statute also providing that guidance. It, I think at this point, you know, the state-local conflict law's always been there, but this supplements it to go one step further of that personal financial gain. The standard is there, you know, not of appearance, but one where we do see, you can quantify, if you will, and not be as subjective. And I think that will provide us more guidance. I'm not saying that maybe we'd be back the next two years when a new board's seated to look at it again, but at least it gives us more to work with than what we have right now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Allenbrin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Trent, I really appreciate this, because just all the turmoil that went on with planning and zoning during solar, and trying, for them to try to have an open mind. I mean, these are volunteers, and I appreciate you working with them so that they know, you know, what the rules of order are and how they're conduct themselves, but what went on during those meetings was the way the staff was treated, following people to their car, to bully them on how they vote, just that's what, that's why we have a conduct of order, and I really appreciate you doing this, and I, I just appreciate it, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Thank you, Chairman. So, it's, so these, these reports are supposed to be filed annually, and these reports are filed with the election office?
Yeah, let me clarify that for clarification, because I'll be candid, I was not as familiar until we started with the subcommittee, and I was getting into the local, and trying to figure out ours is, you know, between our Code of Ethics and the state, and how that all interplayed. So, as elected officials, you are obligated, when you run for office, to file, as you know, a statement of interest, substantial interest with the election commission, is how the county is filed, and that is public document for anyone to see. I did not know that, but it's there. And I had an opportunity to even look at all, all of your substantial interests, just to make sure I understood what was going, because we should be looking at that to know. When I, and what would happen is, my understanding is, if your interest, so once you get elected, if your interest changes, because it's part of the criminal statute, meaning you have now a new interest to answer that question, you have to go in and amend it. So, it's not every year, but you should be looking at it annually, because they say in April, that's, I think it's April 15th, or around tax day, I thought, to look at it, to see if you have other interests. As long as you're disclosing that and keeping it, as well as coupled with the other parts of the state statute of competitive bidding, on contracts, and these other items, financial, then you do not have a conflict under our state laws, and you can proceed to vote. Now, that doesn't mean you may not feel comfortable to your voters, and you're thinking, "I don't want to get involved," that's your, but that's on you to make that determination. From our determination, that's a basis in something that's measurable.
Okay, so, I, I need clarification. So, if we have a substantial interest, and with a, with an organization that is awarding, has been awarded a bid, but it has, but we have that on our substantial interest, and it's a competitive bid, we do not have to disclose that we have a potential?
No, no. And also, if you have direct or indirect financial, so there could be a situation that you're, you're involved in some matter where we're not voting on it, but there's some direct, or you have an indirect or personal financial interest in some, I mean, it could be many things, not just contracts that come before you. Those are also looking at that, those are where you cannot vote.
Okay, explain that again.
There is a difference between, as it says here, on that paragraph, those where you derive some direct and tangible personal or professional benefit from it.
So, if?
You could have an interest in something, but not necessarily your, you, you can have an interest, but you're not getting, and I know that's hard to say, because, let me give an example. Because I think we were talking about this, I think, in the subcommittee, I'm trying to think of what we used as an example, of a personal benefit, we said.
Well, maybe you can think about that and clarify?
I don't want to get into specifics, because that would be breaching confidentiality of ethic complaints that we've received to date, so I'm very cautious to give examples. I could explain later, you know, but confidentially, I don't feel comfortable, because I know a lot of ethic complaints that get filed, so I know of some examples, but I would say that I can provide you more clarity on that point later.
Okay, so, just as an example, if I am an ownership or partner in a, in an organization that will, is representing, or has, has an interest in a contract going forward, then I should abstain?
Well, according to state Kansas law, if you have an interest and you've disclosed it on your statement, and you have, there was a competitive bidding process, there has to be all of this in place under the statute, then you could vote in that matter, because you're shielded from it and what's going on, and it says you can do vote.
Commissioner Ashcraft, you've been patient, do you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hate this discussion, because I've been through it before, debating conflicts of interest and ethics is like arguing about how many angels can dance on the head of a pin, right? And most of the time, I think where people end up is kind of what the, the environmental tolerance is, what, what the community expects, your peers expect, and, and that's something that we have to flesh out. I would suggest that we probably want to err on the side of caution, but at this point, I think we're, we're still trying to develop what that framework is. So, I, I think these are great questions. I would have, like, wanting, I would like to have more of an understanding of some particular circumstances?
Okay.
That I have struggled with, just being on this board, and I'm not saying they're conflicts, but you get in the discussion of what the appearance is and what the reality is, because even the wording here of direct and tangible, personal, or professional benefit, that professional benefit umbrella is, is mushy.
Well, on, on the state interests, that substantial interest, it gets into that disclosure on that form, and the problem, I hear what you're saying, but it is, you know, I feel, and I think the board, subcommittee, that you had this discussion, you're the elected official, you're the one who's running for office, and you are the one who has to be accountable to the voters, and you could disclose it, you know, and you did everything legally proper for our, our benefit, it's you that's accountable, as you know, to the voters every day, and it's for you to determine if you think, "Hey, I don't want to vote for it." But for our purposes of enforcement, as elected officials, we're getting into very subjective land, and, and we're controlling you, and that's not what you want, that's why we have the state, we have the state-local conflict laws that apply to our state legislators, our state elected to the local, that's why it's there, because they understand that.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Yeah, just very quickly, I would say that what I'm hearing is, there's, there's the, the rule of law, and I myself have gone to our legal department when I've wanted to make sure there was something that could possibly be a conflict. There's, there's the rule of law, but then, as you're saying, I may decide to recuse myself anyway, even though I don't technically have to, because I, I feel there could be though I don't technically have to, because I, I feel there could be the misinterpretation or interpretation that there's a conflict. So, so there's two, two levels here. One is whether you are, how you are legally bound to behave, and then second is how you yourself want to handle it. There's, and that can be hard to make those decisions.
Commissioner Ashcraft, I'm going to let you go here, but then I'm going to ask that we move on, just in the interest of time.
Thank you. I appreciate Commissioner Hanslick's observation, because I'm a little bit confused. Under a previous board, all due respect to the current chair, when someone wanted to recuse themselves, we had to offer the statement, why. Today, we did not, and I'm not saying I agree or disagree, but what, what is the standard? Because what I think I heard Commissioner Hanslick say, there's the law, but then what you feel personally. Because previously, we were told if we didn't have a good reason, we couldn't do it, or something along those lines.
Right. So I, if, Chair, if I could, yeah, you just can't get out of the Roberts Rules of Order to just get out of not, you know, making a vote on hard decisions that you are faced with every day. So you have to have a basis for you not voting, and it's expected that your voters, that you'll vote. So when you get into this process of conflicts, um...
How many angels?
Yeah, it's, it's, I guess where I'm going with it, you're just going to have to make a determination. But today, when the chair, without airing, I mean, this is his first meeting, okay? And it was, he, I did clarify from the dais that there was a potential conflict of interest. That should be enough, because I said, I knew he had talked with me. There's reasons other that apply to individuals in each of your roles outside of being an elected official that prohibit you from talking sometimes openly. And that we have to respect. And our rules say that you have to provide the reason, the reason in this case was a conflict of interest. I said he had a conflict, so someone did it. In the future, maybe we'll just say, hey, he's got a conflict and I, and I've talked to counsel. But that's fine, because he had, he had done. But I can't go, sometimes you can't tell what it is, because you have an obligation of a confidentiality agreement or something you can't tell publicly. And you then are violating the privacy, you're in trouble on another area. So we have to, so when I read the rules, I don't know what your previous counsel, what they told you previously. I read the rule that it was that open. You just have to declare a conflict. And usually, if you've told me, and we can make sure that's clear in the rule, when we get to it, I'll make note, that we've put you, as long as you've disclosed to me. Because if I know, then, you know, I've had that dialogue with you.
Thank you. Shall we move on to ex parte communications?
Yes. And then I think that may be our, we'll try to get through that in attendance. So ex parte communication, this has come up a lot and is not part of your rules, but we're adding this in. And the subcommittee discussed this, and we saw a lot of this with the Planning Commission and what was doing, because you also, as a board, sit in here on, you sit as a quasi judicial zoning, you're deciding certain issues that can be appealed. And so what is expected is the staff, as you'll notice in the staff reports that come to you, like, let's say zoning issues, it gives you all the information of whether there's been public comments, who said what. You're supposed to, solar was a good illustration. They even set up a website to put all of the comments, so everyone could see, all of you could see what was being said, and you can review and read it. It also makes sure that everyone's on the same playing field, that you know what everyone is. And I know it was a little bit awkward at first, but a lot of you are really good. You'll weave in, I was out at the house, I saw this, you know, that's disclosing that someone has knowledge that you had an, you did go out and view this location. It's just making sure everybody's on the same playing field. You've got to be careful you haven't crossed the line to investigating, because that's for staff, and then we get into a different host of issues. But it's just a good reminder, and it's not uncommon in other communities. I know Commissioner O'Hara provided me Overland Park and different ones when we were going through the bylaws over with Planning Commission. And I looked at a lot of communities and how they do it, a lot of them abroad. And no, anything, even if it's, I know we hear the distinction between legislative and judicial, it just gets crazy when to decide that gray line. So better practice is not, when you have an item coming up for consideration, you're going to talk to people, but making sure that that's disclosed in here so other people know, especially with items that are quasi judicial. So that's why that clause was added, just to give that heightened level, because it became apparent to me, as I knew, that I was seeing a lot of dialogue that was going on behind the scenes on items that could go up on appeal. And we need to make sure that you're mindful that you're in a unique role, and if you're out in discussing items, you've now potentially got to make sure that ethically, everybody knows what you're communicating. And I think all of you've been through this, this, this discussion, I think, at one point.
Commissioner Allenbrun.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a quick question. So if one commissioner breaks this rule, what's, what happens at that point?
Where'd she go?
Oh. She's drinking.
So at the end, when we get to the end of this draft,
Okay, never mind.
there's an enforcement proceed, procedure.
Thank you.
And, and the enforcement is about, and I don't believe the subcommittee, we added the, yeah, we did. Did we add this in the code of ethics? I can't remember. I have to go look. We may have added that in, but I don't believe we did. We just thought that was more part of meeting, that the chair would have a discussion and enforce the rules that, what are in here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Trent, could you elaborate on a little bit the phrase, "out of the presence of other parties"? Other parties, i- if I'm talking to the chair privately, I understand that, but if Commissioner Hanslick is there or Harry's there, it's, would that, I mean, how, what does that mean?
If you're an applicant on a zoning matter, you're a party to the action, and you're going to have discussions with the other, like, people who are opposed or with that party. That's what they're talking about, that you're, you're having discussions outside of this forum. You're going and talking to these parties.
Individually.
Yes.
So, but if, what if they're together? What if there's a pearl and a con together?
Yeah, you shouldn't be doing it if it's, if it's a quasi judicial matter. Should not be doing it.
Other questions on ex parte communications? Seeing none. Let's discuss attendance.
Attendance is such that you need to make sure you attend all meetings, and that's obvious as you're accountable to the voters. But unless it's prevented, performing, is due to illness, emergency, as we've learned, or other conflict. And you're expected, if you're not going to be present, to notify the chair prior to the meeting, or alternatively, the clerk, just that someone knows and how we set up anything, if in the event, that you cannot be present.
But the clerk now, because it used to be the county manager.
It's, it says clerk in the rule.
I know, but we always...
Whether or not we've been adhering to the practice or not, the rule says clerk.
We could change it to the county manager if you want.
I think the clerk is important.
Yeah.
Okay.
She's keeping the attendance, anyway.
Yeah. And this is why we're going through and re-familiarizing with these rules, because we, you're going to see, as we get further into these rules, what we know to be the resolution in the practice, we've deviated and we're doing something different when we get into succession, not appointment to boards. We'll get into that. So we want to codify what you're doing and getting into the practice of what we've done. So if you want to change it, now's the time we could do it.
No, I'm, I'm sure Linda doesn't have anything else she'd rather be doing than looking track.
No, I, I think regardless of what these rules say, it's probably good practice. And our county manager would appreciate a heads up if you're not going to be able to be here, whether or not it's required by the rules or otherwise. But per the rules, notifying the clerk or the chair is required, though frankly, a heads up to the rest of your fellow commissioners also would be appreciated, I think.
It's easy to put more people on a...
Just a CC, right?
Okay, so if you'd like, I can move on to the next section.
Commissioner O'Hara.
But we are allowed, if, if we're, if we're sick or exposed to something, we are allowed to zoom in, or if we're out of town, we can still zoom in.
We're going to get into that. We, there's another section dealing with that appearance, because there's restrictions on that. So that's what we're going to get into later. I have that later in the rules.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Shall we try to utilize our seven minutes, since we've kind of discussed this and it basically restates the charter, anyway?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Dive in.
Okay. The next one is presiding officer. Again, we, this is reiterating, duplicative, but it just isn't recognized of the charter. Again, the chair is the presiding officer and shall have the voice and vote in all proceedings. It's just carrying over from our charter. It goes into more specifics as to generalities, such as the same things of recognizing people on the floor, confining the date, debate to matters under consideration, so we don't springboard into other issues outside of what is in front of the board to consider. And if you do have those orders, then those can be handled, you know, if you have those questions outside of the meeting. But what the chair is trying to do is to just to recognize it and confine it to matters of debate. To decide questions of order, subject to appeal by any member. Again, you had that happen today. Here it is, the appeal of that order. Scrolling down now to page four, put up to vote all matters properly introduced and declared the result thereof for the record. So the chair, as you saw, was to declare the vote, but also what is properly introduced, whether it's properly on an agenda, properly, as you're going to get more into the rules, where it's introduced in the agenda. And some, the chair, the subcommittee talked about all this. So as we get into it deeper, there's areas that we may want amendments to try to address clarity, I think, you know, that Commissioner Faas had mentioned earlier. Yes.
Well, in section four, this has been an issue for me, subject to the, on the vice chair, subject to the approval of the Board of County Commissioners. There was a point, it's, it's always the chair's prerogative, and, and one year, then I voted, you know, because I voted actually for the chair to have their prerogative. And then I got a lot of feedback for why I approved that person as vice chair. I don't understand why we have to have the approval of the board. The chair should just have who they, they want. I mean, I don't, I guess for me, it's like, I'm just voting to approve what the chair wants. I'm not voting on the person.
So just a clarification on this section. So section three, the authority of the chair, we've already gone to vice chair. So vice chair was, there was a conflict, if you will, subtle, within the rules as they currently are written and a resolution that was adopted previously. And if you recall, the subcommittee, this was an issue of discussion, because was it subject or is it not? So this can be removed if you so desire what you want and how that chairs, that vice chair is selected. But what, what we did is we incorporated into this section what was in the resolution. So if and when we bring this on, the rules of order for your approval, we're going to repeal all those outstanding resolutions that it's cross-referenced, so that they're in here. But in that section, that is a point of discussion that the subcommittee had, and we, I just pulled over what was in a resolution for your discussion.
Commissioner Hanslick, do you want to address that point?
Yes, and, and we did have a lot of discussion around this, and, and I, I agree with Commissioner Faas, that we really need to look at this, because generally, the, and I don't believe the charter addresses this.
No.
But this, to me, what I've experienced here is that it is the chair's prerogative to choose the vice chair. And it's, it's, it's kind of a formality for the board to approve it, and what, there's no, there's no provision for if the board doesn't approve it. It, it is the, that is one of the duties of the chair. So I would be, I would be open to removing that clause, subject to approval of the Board of County Commissioners, and just allow that to be the prerogative of the chair to make that decision. I think it, it could cause disorder if, if it's done otherwise.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is good conversation, because I've wondered this myself. The chair can appoint the, or make a nomination, I guess, for appointment. The commission confirms. That does not require commissioners to necessarily vote for that position, so you could abstain or vote in the contrary. But then by extension, would that allow the commission to make, if there was a nomination that failed, the commission generally to nominate someone and vote them in instead? I mean, how does that work? Or does it work?
That's the problem.
That is the problem. And I think the idea, being that the vice chair serves in the stead of the chair, as has been precedent, and you can look at the red line there, the chair goes ahead and selects the member to serve as vice chair. So if there had been a vote in the past, whether it had been a formality or not, wasn't particularly necessary. And by the suggested red lines, it would be, you know, a point and confirm, like you see in the Senate, or for judicial nominations. I think when nominations had failed in the past, the Senate doesn't then nominate a, a person, it goes back to the president, who would then nominate a person. So hypothetically, given this, or given these changes, I would interpret it to say that the chair would then select someone else to nominate, which would then be subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, if this is the language we want to keep. I think according to Commissioner Faas, Commissioner Hanslick, it may be language that we don't want to keep. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think that the, the commission voting on approving the, the selection, I think, I think that it just is one more balance of power, and I, I can't imagine that, that any, any selection by the chair is going to be defeated. But if, and, and if and when that happened, I, I believe you're correct, that you would go back and you would nominate someone else. I, I just, I think that we should keep it in, just because we are representatives of the people, and we should not abdicate our responsibilities of voting on issues.
But let's finish this particular issue before, before we leave it. That's okay, because I know we're at time. And I know in the committee of the halls, that we can move to make a recommendation or direction to staff. So if, can we get a general consensus on whether or not we want to leave in the red lines here on section four, or whether we want to remove them as it relates to the selection and nomination? Commissioner Myers?
Well, to me, I, I would say this is similar to us as commissioners, appointing, making our appointments to committees. We vote on those appointments, which we really don't need to.
They're rubber stamps.
Yeah. And so I would say this is the same thing. But what we have decided is we're continuing to vote on those situations. So that's why I would think we would continue to, to vote in this situation, even though it does seem to be a rubber stamp.
Commissioner Ashcraft, go ahead.
On very rare occasion have those appointments not been rubber stamped. And I don't mean that in a derogatory sense.
Right.
But that, that's a question for us, because this changes the dynamic, and you can argue either side. But I think we need to keep our eyes open in terms of what the implications are, because if we're going to do it here, then maybe we need to think about doing it elsewhere.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Oh, I, I would just say, I mean, I'm, I think there's reasonable arguments on both sides. I, I, what I would say is, again, it goes back to that communication. I know in the past, when I've had questions about vice chair nominations, I've just gone and talked to the chair and expressed my concerns. But out here, I wanted to be very supportive and to show a unified support of that person, even if it may not be the person I would have chosen. But I, I took the opportunity to just go talk to the chair and say, here, here, let's talk about this. I have some thoughts.
Commissioner Faas?
Yeah, and Commissioner Myers and I have gone roundabout on this. I mean, and I don't like that we vote on appointments either, because like a vice chair, then I am accountable to the public, and I vote to honor the chair. The public sees that I'm voting for that vice chair. They see that I'm voting for that board appointment. They don't see that I'm just going through rubber stamping and procedure. In both ways, I've been really called detached by my constituents. I mean, just in the press, in the paper, at meetings, and so...
And so then I am publicly having to defend this vote, which I was voting to support the chair. I didn't vote for the vice chair, I didn't vote for that board appointee. And I just, I guess, you know, for me, then, at times, then I'll just do no, I don't know. It just has really put me in a bad shape place with my constituents.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I disagree. I feel like it needs to be left in, because there is a rule of order on our appointments, and it goes through a process of being on the agenda review. And there is a feeling of, when people see their name in there, there is a feeling of, this is an important task, and this is something I need to make a commitment to. And I as well would support the chair in whatever decision they made, but that's a personal commitment I would make. And if I didn't agree with them, I would go to the chair. But that's with everything that we do all day long. So I can sit up here and not vote on anything, and I'm going to get ridiculed, it's just part of being an elected official. So it would be my vote to leave it in, just like with all the other committees.
Commissioner Hanslick, and I think we're going to wrap it up after that.
I was just going to say, I do think, though, there are differences between, and I hear what everyone's saying, there's, everybody has valid points. I do think, though, there's a little bit different, it's different from our nominating people for boards and commissions than the chair choosing a vice chair. I think it's, those are different dynamics. For me, I like having the opportunity for the public to hear who someone has nominated. You know, if someone has a concern about that, they may contact me, and then I can go to that commissioner and say, hey, you know, I had this concern.
And it's been done.
Yeah, and it's been done. But the chair is a little bit different, because we're choosing from known quantities here. The board assignments are people that aren't necessarily known in the community, but everyone here knows who's the person being nominated. So it's not, I don't think it's as important to have that public opportunity to have input on it. But that's...
If we can go ahead and seek direction, then, on this, and for the purposes of the Committee of the Whole, in Roland Park, we would go thumbs up, thumbs down. If there's another way, that we were more traditionally adept to taking consensus as it relates to matters within the Committee of the Whole on the county commission, I can defer to legal staff on how best we would like to record said direction, short of a roll call vote. But do you have a suggestion for us?
Well, I think maybe the county manager, you may have a suggestion of how you would like it.
I'll throw out an idea, and then I'll look to legal to make sure it works. And then, of course, you guys can choose to go a different path. But in the past, when we had Committee of the Holes, we would say, you would actually take a roll call vote and say, we are directing staff to bring an item back that includes XYZ. So you could cover what you did today and say, as presented with this, if there's a change, or as presented up through section four, for staff to bring it back, as you still would have to vote on it for final approval.
Of course.
But it would give us direction, and I think that's what I'd recommend. But I look at PAG and make sure that that's in line with...
Correct. I was going to say that, but you said it better. Thank you.
Okay. So that's what I'm going to ask for, is if we could take a roll call at this point. Commissioner O'Hara, did you have a point of order?
I have, I have a motion.
Do we take motions in Committee of the Whole?
Yeah, to direct staff.
Yes. I moved that we direct staff to go forward with how this has been presented to us today, to including, continuing the vote on the vice chair to approve the selection that the chair has suggested.
As presented in the red line?
Yes.
Allenbrand, second.
So the motion has been made and seconded?
Chair, I just want clarification. So in the motion, are we just talking about section four? Are you saying all the sections up to section four, including...
Just section four.
Okay, thank you.
I misunderstood. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Chairman, can I ask for another clarification?
Please.
To direct staff, can I ask you to insert, to bring back for further action at a board meeting?
To bring further action at the board meeting.
Correct. Thank you, Penny.
Okay. So we're just talking about section four right now. That motion has been made, that motion by Commissioner O'Hara. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Or, excuse me, Allenbrand. I apologize, a lot of As here on my left.
She has more hair than I do, okay.
Well, at this time, I'll ask our clerk then to call the roll.
Commissioner Fass.
I know.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, yes.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, yes.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Yes. So I have six votes to one, and staff has direction as to that matter. At this time, I'd like to make a motion, and then that we direct staff to bring back to us for action at a board meeting, the rules in order on, from section one, through section three, or Article three, I suppose, Article three, section four, for further action at a board meeting.
Allenbrand, second.
So motion by the chair, second by Allenbrand. Point of order by Commissioner Hanslick.
A question for legal counsel, if I may. Do we want to take this in chunks? It was my understanding we were going to go through the whole thing first, because my concern is there may be...
Yes.
Things down the road that we go back and say, well, wait a minute, that's not consistent with something. I personally am not comfortable voting on it in sections. I'd rather...
It's your preference.
Continue the committees of the whole, and at the end, vote on the whole thing.
Okay. Well, in that instance, I would ask that if I could table my motion, and then maybe remake it at the end of the committees of the whole, after two more sessions of Committee of the Whole, and hopefully we'll have gone through all 30 pages by that point.
I love your optimism.
Unless the other...
We're going to get there. Might be a little longer than you like, Michael, but we're going to get there.
Mr. Chair, I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you so much. With that, is there any further action for this Committee of the Whole, or items? Thank you for everybody's patience and for your diligent work and cooperation and courtesy, as reflected in these rules. At this time, the Committee of the Whole is adjourned, and I hope you all have a wonderful afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.